Please take roles.
Ms. Felter, here. Mr. Fowler. Mr. Lawverden.
I have a form, all right. Now, item one, to consider found option of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter agreements with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development with respects to annual CDBG and home grant funding contracts, amendments, and other documents in matters with respect thereto. All right. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
What exactly is this grant?
Well, this, they are the annual, um...
What am I looking at, man?
Well, these are the annual amounts that the city has awarded for community development, block grant, and home funds. And so there's a set amount that we get each year. It's roughly, this year, about 710,000, I think, together. I don't have it in front of me. I did, but I could have added it up. But I think it's about 710. Now, put in perspective, in 2007 and '08, when I came in, yeah, the Home Investment Partnership Program is 241,035. And the CDBG is 489,682, so about 710, somewhere in there, 700,000. When I came into office, I think it was probably about a little over 800, somewhere around 900,000. When Brenda Ray first started really getting these programs, going back in the '80s and '90s, early 2000s, it was $2 million. So the first million came off, probably, and we didn't, neither your nor my time did we see it. But I've, since we've been back, it's probably gone down a couple hundred thousand. Nothing to do with the city, it's just what they find.
Okay. Now, what does the, what, what's done with the home grant?
What different projects are wrong?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, so they list in here, uh, uh, different, all those different aspects that, uh, the city does. But I, I think that, one of the things I'd want to point out to you is that, for, for example, back on the 11th of September, I've issued an executive order to start looking at home ownership programs. And so the funds that we use, uh, do not, have not tended to be things that are able to help, in my opinion, people in homeownership. There are a couple of factors that go into it. One is, a lot of houses where you'd want to fix up things in it, where you would use funds, are rented, and so it does, it doesn't go to that. So there's a user problem there. In, in...
Give me an example.
So...
Give me an example of that.
If a person is renting, um, a house,
All right.
and what they need is to fix up things that might make it less susceptible to losing air, losing heat, you know, being a little more efficient and all of those things, unless you're an owner of a, of a house, you're not, you can't qualify. So, one of the things that housing needs creates in terms of challenges is that you have an end-user problem. The grant can't be, doesn't benefit necessarily the person who, who really needs it. Over the years, I mean, there's a host of things. And we gave Cynthia a copy, and I, I think that you probably have them all, but, so, for example, we sat down today, knowing this was going to come up, an executive order that was issued in September. There's a cover sheet, which is, uh, the summary, so all on one sheet, then the formal executive order follows, and then a very detailed policy sheet behind it, Mr. Lawverden, that lists all the different things we want to see. And so you're going to see a lot of policy realignment, you're going to see where this creates conflicts, us moving through it. And just to be real clear, this is in large part a strategy that you and I have talked about, and that is consistent with what the, the two of us have expressed that we want to see. Home funds are for major rehab, some new construction, home buyer assistance, but again, uh...
So now, okay, so let me make this plain.
It's not be, it, we're not getting that out of it.
What do you mean, we're not getting it?
I just, we, so, we do major rehabs with it, we do new construction. I just gave you one of the problems with rehab. It's, it's an end-user problem.
The tenants don't get the benefit.
So I'll give you the new construction problem. So the new construction problem is, although it's designed for this, the challenge is to qualifying at a bank and getting the other assistance you need to do those things, you're just not hitting a pace that, in my opinion, I'm not speaking for, I am speaking for community development, but let me be clear. Our guys that do that work, work hard, Ms. Branham and her team. They work on what they have to deal with. They would agree that these challenges exist. So when I speak, I'm not speaking to, they're not effective. They're immensely effective, as was Brenda Ray, who taught a lot of people around the state all this. The programs themselves are designed in a way that a city our size, with the challenges we have in housing stock, I don't believe these things meet our needs. I have not for many years believed that they do. And I want to move us on a major policy pivot, not a incremental one, a complete shift of pointing our turret on our tank a whole different way.
Okay, so pause right there.
Yes.
So there's $240,000 home grant.
Yes.
Home grant money. That money was used primarily...
Major rehab, new construction, home buyer assistance.
Okay. Now, I get, uh, the rehab. Explain to me the home buyers' assistance program. Like, how, how would that work?
Well, there's funds available to help people with everything from down payment to other stuff, but that's what I'm telling you. You got to get there. You, the people who qualify to do it, so, Michael's saying he's right, very few qualify. And then those that do, to go get the rest of what it takes to make this happen and make it meaningful to make a change in a home that you own, not renting, right?
Right.
It doesn't hit a, it, it doesn't hit a lick that I think is effective for us.
So, since homeownership has not been effective, how have we been using the home grant?
We do it for those things. I mean, we have a limited amount. We, we're, that's what these, so let me answer. That's what these contracts are authorized, we're going to do it. What I'm telling you is, I believe we need to, and I've ordered it be done, study and pivot us completely off of that, where we're doing a whole new set of projects. And, for example, when we talk about you can't afford it, just think of a normal house, where you have focused, and I think you're smart to do it, is looking more at the potential for prefabricated modularized or modular housing, smaller housing. I'm not talking about tiny houses, I know on TV everybody's, we're talking about smaller, modular, prefabricated, even in part. It doesn't have to all be prefab, but there's a whole bunch of ways that you can create cottages and houses and lay them down in an area where the amounts of money we have would have a bigger impact of getting people meaningful, new, efficient housing.
Yes.
What the challenges are, and what this executive order that I've put together does, is it starts to take the zone, everybody working together, all of the different parts that we have under us, like zoning commissions and all of them, they have to be part of that. Why? Because right now, you could have zoning and other rules that don't allow you to do modular or prefabbed or those kind of things. All of that has to be relaxed, and we have to consider it. This executive order is very, very detailed, and so is the policy part behind it. So I'm going to just tell you what we hope to do. Policy statement, one is smaller, compact, prefabricated housing. Using modular and alternative housing in planned urban developments should be considered versus, but also in conjunction with relaxing zoning standards for diversified uses. Okay?
Now, 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 those rules being relaxed throughout the city or just in certain areas?
So, great question. The next sentence is, uh, we have not planned this together, by the way, he's just on top of his, of this. So one of the challenges that diversification of use faces would be economic challenges are affecting other property values unreasonably. So what we have to make sure is that where we do this, the community is for it, that we don't impact other property values or make people believe it will, which can have the same effect, without being careful. So we do need to plan, but some cities just do it wide open. They drop all the rules, and you can have prefab anywhere. Obviously, that won't work. You will have a lot of people in this room either way. And we're not trying to do that. But we do think where you have housing stock that is already terribly substandard, there's no risk here. There's zero risk. So that's one thing. I, I, so again, I think we, we have at times, that was probably a little before my time, but I've had a few under my watch, where we think, we perhaps think we're doing a good thing. And so the mobile home overlay was to get people in a housing choice. Remember, it's all about choice, which is what you're animating, right? You want rental, you want some help with rental. What Mr. Lawverden, so that everybody knows and I are focusing on, is not rental and all those other things. There's a place for that. We're focusing...
And not mobile homes either.
This is on homeownership only, this pivot that I'm making with my staff and folks. I want y'all to know that. Back to the point Mr. Fowler made, I think people thought, look, give people choices, give them opportunities, and so they thought about mobile home overlays. I know that this time, it is my position, and probably most of last time, I, I will not support a staff request for a mobile home overlay, except in the most exceptional circumstances where you're expanding an existing one and they're promising to go up or anything else. I have, just me, I have not seen anybody uphold any guarantees of what they are. I don't think they're good for the city. I think mobile homes belong not in city limits. That's just me. Am I judging people who have mobile, no. Am I saying that existing ones, we aren't going to service and do what we're supposed to do? No, we are. But to create new mobile home overlays, not part of this policy. This is focused on ownership first, and secondarily, the, the sub-policy is smaller, compact, prefabricated housing, and secondly, adaptive reuse. So that's the B part. Adaptive reuse would be converting existing buildings, such as abandoned office complexes, hotels, motels, factories, historic buildings, even old schools, can, taking that and creating adaptive reuse into housing. It minimizes construction waste, it has a bunch of other things. The challenges to both areas are, what I was talking about earlier, securing financing and navigating current local regulations. With smaller, compact, there's a third one, and the third challenge, so their challenge are securing financing, navigating regulations, and overcoming social stigma, overcoming so... Everyone gets an adaptive reuse. You take a building, you bring it back into commerce, even if it's housing, and it's happy. Prefab housing and those other things, people will attach a stigma like mobile homes and other things, and so you have to overcome that. But if you see the quality of things that can be offered versus some of the stock of where we're talking about, it's a no-brainer, but you got to get people there.
Now, Mayor, now, you are aware, I met with Ms. Kay McGill several weeks ago with some folks on the street, were you informed of that?
I'm, I'm aware that you met with Ms. McGill.
All right. And we brought down some people, I guess we met with some folks from Shreveport who were doing affordable housing up there. Were you aware of that?
Well, I'm not aware of the meeting. I'm not sure Ms. McGill was aware when the meeting was called that it was going to be that, but I'm aware that there was a meeting.
Okay. All right, all right. Well, um...
I would definitely tell anybody interested to read this executive order and, and figure that out, because it has room for people who have the expertise, qualifications, and ability to, to get, get involved in this. I would definitely say that.
I guess just my concern is, are, are we, I can't carefully choose this, I mean, do we have the proper people in place to deal with the people we're trying to reach?
So, let, let me address that, that's another great point. On the first page of the executive order, again, the point of a summary is to try to give you all this other technical detail on one page. And it talks about in section four, use of expert consultants and next steps, and it gives you a list of, of things that we need to do, uh, in order to do that. So, one of the requirements is that we would want competitive processes for this, or if it's going to be arms-length, industry leader processes that, that we can engage with. So people have to have a proven track record of this, they have to really be leaders in it. Lots of people are involved in housing, Mr. Lawverden, and lots of people promise a whole lot of things. And the first thing they usually promise is, if the, if the city will pay for it, we can make it all work. And what I've noted about when the city subsidizes things like that, without other stakeholders having to be involved, when there's federal money and other things, is the citizens lose almost every time. And I can point to apartment complexes and other things we've been talking about in here to prove that. So, I, I just want to make sure we know, we talked about home funds, major rehab, new construction, home buyer assistance. The point of this pivot, with which I know you agree, is we would want to achieve all three of those same home fund goals, but have them have real meaning, as in, go figure, putting someone in a new house, as opposed to only affecting a tiny amount of people a tiny bit and really not getting there. Getting people qualified for housing and homeownership is tough. Credit, that's what I said, securing financing is number one. Credit is, is tough. Traditional banks don't want to do it. Imagine a traditional bank looking at letting you borrow money to put it in what they consider good money after bad, right? So one of the social stigmas, I gave you the three reasons even for new modular and prefab is, banks haven't caught up fully to that. So it isn't that they're loaning money for a house they think they won't get, make, own. It's now, well, I don't know what the value of that is, because no one knows this real market yet for this. What does this all mean? So that's going to take a massive amount of education. Banks have CRA requirements, Community Reinvestment Act requirements. We have reached out to several, there are some in the state who do this regularly and a little more big time. We've got a local one here that we think will take some interest, Red River.
That's okay.
And Ms. Janice Seacher, so she's the CRA compliance officer over there. So we'll be looking at this, but this is 100% in compliance with the philosophy you and I shared that we want to see happen. And I want to make sure people don't hear us wrong. No one is saying there's not room for other housing options, rental, et cetera. No one's saying we're against rental. What we're saying is, if you look at when neighborhoods do better with, with people owning, with the way people feel about owning a house, how they feel about their yard, how they feel about keeping up things and their neighbors and watching out for things, it's just different.
It is.
It's just different. And, and what it does is, it creates a lot more neighborhood integrity, it creates a lot more people sort of in it together, it actually creates a neighborhood, a community of interests, if you will, own what is for most people, guys, for most people. Even people with some wealth, the house is the one equity asset they own. For most Americans, that is, it may be a big house, but that really may be the only thing they have and own as an asset of that kind. So that's what I started off earlier, saying, look, you can't just rush in and say, this can be allowed everywhere, because you're going to get people on an asset, the only one they have, they're going to scream bloody murder, even if they, if it isn't going to hurt them, we've got to walk into this right. However, my executive order has some dead, it's, it's aggressive in terms of getting the information from people who can help in, in pivoting us off this.
Yes, sir, Mr. Felter.
Uh, I know this is, all of this stuff is very specifically regulated, highly regulated. A couple of things. One, is there any way that we can apply a multiplier to the money to increase the amount of any way that you're aware of? I'm not.
Yes, and so, that's 100%. That's great, you are on top of your game. The S. And so, for example, we're talking about doing these in certain designated corridors. Like reignite itself in the reimagine corridor, what I would go look for first, Malcolm has a few that he's already earmarked for us, what I would go look at is, can you find tracks that are next to diversion bodies? Water diversion bodies? Can you find tracks next to rail? All of these different things where you might find a tract have a twofold purpose in what you just asked me for, leveraging money. So, for example, if it's next to a water diversion body, A, there's a safety reason that you would want to help that air, right? But when it is about that, like you could be expanding the horseshoe drainage canal or anything like that, if you look at the big reimagine project for the mall, all the areas that are around that are going to have an opportunity for leverage funds. And that, that's not the only one. There's brownfield opportunities, there's all kind of other things where around an area where there's housing, there's a much larger footprint that you can leverage these dollars, whether feds or others will put it in. And I look at that simply, I know people say, well, that's all the same tax dollars. I, I'm different. I see it like this. And we don't have the affordable, the tax dollar here that can subsidize all this, but we all pay our tax dollars that go to the federal government. Every one of those I can get back here, I'm going to try to do. And so I know some people look at that differently and say, we ought to not be doing it all. Fact of the matter is, our housing stock is substandard in this, I've declared it an emergency, a public health emergency in some areas, and that's how we need to be approaching this. Three goals are increased local housing supply, we need to increase supply, improve affordability, and increase the policy-directed oversight and efficiencies in the Office of Community Development toward ownership, toward ownership.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, so, so for all the people who are in here who are watching, are you now telling us the city is now pivoting on how it's going to deal with the affordable housing moving forward?
For anyone watching, I'm telling you that with all the authority we have to make a complete and utter policy shift to ownership, that that's, that's what we're doing. That does not mean that other projects that people get that are, you know, have a private developer and all that, aren't going to be in place. It means that I have watched for too many years, something I've always believed in, ownership always take the second seat, and that, I, I just can't do that.
Okay.
We, we need to expand and preserve what we have, we need to expand it, we need to improve affordability, we need to advance the accountability and fiscal responsibility by spending those dollars, not where we check the boxes right. They're doing it right, Mr. Lawverden, it's just, you're doing it right, is it making the impact you need? And if it's not, we need to redo that. And finally, uh, we need to make sure that we're moving these into the policy we all want. We all want homeownership, let's do it.
All right, Mr. Fowler.
Uh, one other thing that, uh, I know that from the outside looking in, Habitat for Humanities has been fairly successful in what they do, but I think one of the things they strive is that the person that's participating in the project has skin in the game, and causes them to take a greater interest in the, the actual physical asset. Will this be something like that, or can it be something like that?
Yes. So, when people are doing this for ownership, they're going to have to, they're going to have skin in the game. The challenge has been that the amount of, so they can't put their skin in the game, because the other part they need, like anyone else who would go get a loan at the bank, through credit, through, that you're putting in in a substandard house in the first place, that a bank doesn't feel like there's any return on that, they can't get there, even if they're well-meaning, have a job, hold it down, and they're doing everything right they're supposed to do, they can't get there because they don't meet traditional guidelines.
So, so what you're saying is, to use this in a context that some people are familiar with, and I don't, I hope, this, this is the best example I can give, um, I have a lot of clients, criminal clientele clients who may have a bond, and the bond's too high, and they can't touch it. So in essence, we're trying to bring down the requirements a bit, so that some folks who have less have an opportunity to get into the game. Because I honestly believe a lot of folks don't get in because they don't believe it's possible, you know?
Oh, I think there's a lot of folks that don't believe it's possible. They don't even think it's...
It's due, it's, it's even in the realm of possibilities. And I know in the early twenties, 2000s, I know the last affordable housing program I'm, I'm familiar with occurred in the senior quarters, and I know Mr. Fuller and the parish were working together with that project, because I was a closing attorney on that project. So, you know, for the people who drive, then you see the, some of the brick facade homes. Yeah, yeah. Matter of fact, I, I was involved in that. So I'm just hoping we, we can really become very aggressive, because I think if people think it's attainable, I think there are people out there who will buy into it. So...
I encourage y'all to read the exec, just, I know you will, but...
Yeah.
Read it, you're going to see the parts of everything we're discussing. Michael's last note he's lent me said, little interest in, in homeownership. I, I want to make sure y'all, I'm assuming he's talking with Kay and some of the folks upstairs there, who are really into this, Ms. McGill's always has been. When you say little interest in homeownership, that sounds counter what we're saying. No, people want to have a home, but there is little interest in the belief they can ever attain it.
Yes.
And there's also just a big group that don't, it's not like everybody who thinks of the dream of, the American dream is owning a home. It's so far unattainable that it's, becomes not the dream, and the other side of it is, they really don't care to. They, they're thinking the wrong way. They're like, I'll just rent, I'll get this, I'll figure out my little thing. If we can get people owning homes again, or having that vested interest, it's going to make neighborhoods better, it's going to have an effect on crime, it's going to have an effect on everything about the value self-worth, how people feel.
I just think, I think a lot of people just think homeownership is out of reach. And I think if we can make it more attainable, I think we can change minds.
Yeah.
Because number one, a 20% down deposit, you know, on affordable housing, a house nowadays is, a nice home is $300,000 or $400,000, you know? So for a lot of people, that is completely just out of, out of reach, out of touch.
Look, I want to put it in perspective, what you asked the question of, Mr. City Attorney, I, while this may have a lot of focus because of the nature of these programs on folks who are very income challenged, I, I need people to understand something. Folks who are going to, into professional jobs, who are graduating, being graduated with four-year degrees or better...
They're having trouble...
Can't, they're not, they're not getting houses right now. And, and it's for this same reason, they feel it's unattainable, or they can't meet the, the requirements to do it. This is a challenge for all. So if you, if you consider it, oh, this is big government talking about spending, it's not that. This is a challenge in every income class, until you get to a, a, a pretty high level, there are challenges to this, the cost of a house. So prefabricated, smaller, modular houses, I, I guess it's, it's not your grandfather's version, maybe I would say, I mean, there was at one time, you would just think, absolutely not, that's ugly, it's cheap, it's this, there's, there's a lot of different levels of quality now that bring down that affordability, so you, you allow that income requirement to get you there. And the purpose of all these orders that I'm changing, Ms. Felter, is to make the staff have to commit to go study this, find the best people out in the country who are doing it, and bring them on board to help us get there. But you can't make a pivot unless you make a strong enough order that says, look, there's going to be metrics, you're going to be measured by this, we got to do it.
Well, you're the mayor, you're in charge. Like, you're the one who issues that policy.
But sometimes it takes, that's what I'm saying, sometimes it takes an executive order, because I can say it over and over, but someone's got to check the, look, you don't understand, Mayor, we've got, this is our only money. If we don't do this on time, all the caper, everything y'all do every year is all about checking those boxes. And you've got one of the best staffs led by Shirley you can get, but she, her hands are tied with those kinds of things. If she were to miss anything because we're telling her to make a policy shift, big problems occur. So you'll read how the order is structured, it's a direct, you have to do it, but don't do anything that undoes whatever you're committed to, this, it, it has a rollout process, but it forces them to tell us what that is. Not because they won't, but because we all have to be part of thinking through it. We're moving to ownership. And it also embraces the idea, if we can't, we fail, we whatever, it ain't going to be because we didn't get up and swing the bat.
Okay. And I imagine this project, this, these changes can also benefit districts two and three?
Uh, I, I think it, it could benefit everywhere, but yes, I mean, one and three would be obviously the, the most primary, immediate beneficiaries, but they're, look, this is a problem elsewhere.
I mean, we've known about this problem for years, for decades, so, all right. Ms. Felter, what do you want to say?
Um, I think you answered all my questions. So you think that to maximize the effectiveness of this money, the policy changes, moving toward that, having that accountability with the staff moving that way is going to, is going to help with that?
Yes, and I would just tell y'all, go to pages five and six of the order where you get to the actual, the order language outside of the recitals and why we're doing it, you get to what the KPIs are, the key performance indicators. That, it's not in your book, it was sent to you, but you'll see it. But streamlining approvals, Ms. Felter, lots of stuff, there are lots of other obstacles than finances. And so without an executive order that tells all the agencies, the zoning boards, all the appointments I have, hey, new policy, when someone comes and asks for a change that you would normally say, no, look more closely, and we'll have people there to talk about why.
Right, so you're not working this yourself.
A hundred percent. You're talking about a massive educational part, component of this too. So you asked, that was your original question, do I recognize that we need folk that can meet that educational component, both to the citizen user and to the public themselves? meet that educational component, both to the citizen user and to the public themselves, who can walk in the right places and say things in a way where trust is built, that not everybody can do?" And the answer to that is yes, we recognize that, and we make that commitment to that.
Okay, all right.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe abandon, abandon lots and stuff for this?
Adjudicated property.
Adjudicated property.
Oh, I didn't, I apologize, I'm thinking about his question.
Adjudicated property for this, maybe?
Say again?
Use adjudicated property.
Yes, but, uh, you, Ms. McGill's was just talking, yes, that would be one of the goals you would do in adaptive reuse, and elsewhere, yes.
All right. Ma'am? All right, can I have a recommendation?
All right. All righty, that's it.
So, Mr. Lawverdane, just so y'all know, which I authorized me to do tonight is the status quo, but understand, to make sure you knew how serious it was, while you're authorizing a status quo, before it could happen, this is the new order. And so, all that'll start changing, even as we sign and do this.
The order that we were sent today, is that one was previously sent to us?
Yeah, you do it every year.
No, that, your, your executive order, did you send that?
No.
Is that something new that we got today?
It's brand new.
Brand new, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, so the people watching here understand, what we're passing tonight was under the old rule.
You, you have to do it, we could lose money, but even it is already, they have to start looking at these new rules of, can they even pivot off some of this?
Okay.
This is just all for us to sign the contracts to get the money. Guys, we gotta, you're just getting your allocation by this.
This is one that's absolutely true, you dot every i, you cross every t, and you don't cut, put commas out of the words.
Understand, understand, but for the future money that we're getting, it would be, the application would be under the new rules.
A hundred percent, but I'm telling you, even under this, as we, unless Shirley's committed something and can't undo it, it requires her to rethink even those things now, and show us why she can or cannot, well, in this case, cannot. Like, she'll have a duty to tell us, "I can't, here's why."
Okay, now, how are you gonna, I guess, make sure Ms. Shirley is educated on what you're trying to do?
Well, number one, she's smart as a whip, and I think she's gonna, she's gonna do it, but like everybody who works in these kind of things, you're used to how you dot the i's and cross the t's, so you have to move it off that, I don't...
I guess my question is, Mayor, around here in Alexandria, we just seem to have a way of doing things, and doing things differently can some, there can sometimes be some pushbacks.
That's why the executive order says, so you'll have to go read, there's, there's a consequence to not follow it.
Okay, I understand, maybe a...
So, so look, Ms. McGill's texted me today about Federal Home Loan Bank of Dallas offers ownership assistance through member banks, she's going through what she just sent the message on about the adaptive reuse. To answer your question, here's a natural answer, no frills about it, I wrote, "Agreed, I'll pay for whatever," this is me texting, "I'll pay for whatever training, schooling, travel, or certification Shirley wants to get to do more, I will invest in her as much as she wants, but I believe in this philosophical shift, regardless of the fact that I'm happy to see more council members do too," talking about you, "It's always been in my gut, the right thing, even though I know we need a mix of opportunities, I think you shared this with me, house ownership begets changed attitudes, pride, and community concern for the all." And her next comment was about J. Quad, which I've told y'all over and over, was one of the best studies I've ever seen us do, and we are gonna contact the, the principal of J. Quad, who's now in Dallas, and, and get him to come look at, at some of that again.
Well, just knowing Ms. Branham over the last few years that I've been on the council, she's so knowledgeable on all, in this realm, so I think she's a good person to push this forward, and seeing how, how things have to be done, and then how they get to be done in the future, and I think that, you know, we're out cheering her on to, to figure this out, because there's so many things, hoops you have to jump through, and so much knowledge you have to have.
She's probably listening, saying, "I'll do whatever y'all tell me to do, I just gotta, but, yeah."
Okay, all right, all right, that's it. All right, legal committee is adjourned.
The Alexandria City Council meeting is called to order. The Alexandria City Council meeting and council committee meetings are broadcast live and may be viewed live by the public on Optum Cable Channel Four, or rebroadcast may be viewed on Optum Cable Channel Four and the City of Alexandria, Louisiana website. We have the invocation by Councilman Johnson, and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Fowler.
Bow here. Good evening, Father, we come to you again, asking you to guide us in our decision-making. Guide us that our decision-makers is not for us, but for the better of this community. God bless this community, and bless the citizens, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Amen and amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Ms. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Present.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mr. Lawverdane?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Madam President, give a word.
Okay, we have approval of a minutes taken from a regular meeting held on September the 3rd, 23rd, 2025, a motion, motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Green. What section of this written minutes would you like to make comment on? If it's not in the written minutes, you will have a seat, we're taking comments only. If you have any questions pertaining to any of the items on the agenda, please contact the administration before or after the meeting. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
F, executive session to be held pursuant to RS 4217A2 on the following. A, to consider an executive session to receive a report and recommendation from the City Attorney regarding resolution of judgments and disputes in the matter entitled Maisha Piper versus James A. Gant at all, docket number 271130, and Ebony V. Lee versus City of Alexandria, Clyde D. Mix, James A. Gant, and Go Auto Insurance Company, docket number 272626, Knight Judicial District Court, and other matters related thereto.
Now, motion, please, and second. Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Valord, to go into executive sec...
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Valord?
Yes.
Mr. Lawverdane?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Madam President, as you know...
Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Everybody voted.
Motion, okay. All right.[1134.15]
Okay, that may be all.
Motion in second to come on executive session.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Valuard. Mr. Lawberdane.
Yes.
Ms. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Felter.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
G consent calendar. Number one, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the law, be it submitted for brass fitting and miscellaneous for a 12-month period. Number two, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew the existing contract for janitorial services for the cleaning of the Alexandria zoological park. Number three, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the city attorney to satisfy the judgment rendered June 12, 2025, and consolidate matters at the Ninth Judicial Court entitled Maisha Piper versus James A. Gant at all, docket number 271130, and Ebony V. Lee versus City of Alexandria, Clyde D. Mix, James A. Gant, and Gold Auto Insurance Company, docket number 272626, and other matters related thereto. Number four, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the rezoning of property at 3220 MacArthur Drive, Alexandria, Parish of Rappies, Louisiana, from C2 General Commercial to I2 General Industrial District to allow heavy industrial retail sales.
Motion in second, please.
Second.
Motion by Council Fowler, second by Council Johnson. Any items to committee?
H resolutions. Number five, resolution to co-sponsor YWCA Girls on the Run Central Louisiana Fall 2025 5K Race in November 2025.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Council Valord, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number six, resolution to co-sponsor Louisiana Women' Astro Culture Launch and Learn in November 2025.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Valord, second by Councilwoman Felter. Public comments, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number seven, resolution authorizing advertisement for bids for petroleum products and chemical adjectives for Wazilla Engine at DG Hunter Power Plant.
Motion, please. Second.
Second.
Motion by Council Fowler, second by Councilwoman Valord. Public comments, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number eight, resolution setting a public hearing to be held on December the 2nd, 2025, to consider condemnation of 25 structure within the city.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lawberdane, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
I ordinances for final adoption subject to public hearing. Number nine, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the law, be it submitted for turnout gear for the fire department.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Valord, second by Councilwoman Felter. Public comments. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
My name is Mr. Cornelius Lawson White Jr. I live at 3638 10th Street in Alexandria, Louisiana, 71302. My phone number is area code 318-446-6934. As always, I support and buy local and stuff. I hope we can work with Kaplan's or whoever, but I hope we can do this locally like we do our police and stuff like that. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Sir, would you say, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. White.
Oh, they didn't bid on it? Really?
This may not be in the handle.
Okay. Well, that's, well, Jim, I'm just, I just didn't know.
I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Number 10, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to se-
Hold on a minute.
Oh, yeah.
Discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
My bad. Number 10.
Good bet.
To consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the law, be it submitted for consolidated city compound, mellow roof and soft fit replacement.
Motion.
The administration is requesting that this item be delayed for two weeks.
Move delay.
Move delay. Motion to move delay. Public comments, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number 11, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Rappies Parish Law Enforcement District relative to an employee health and wellness clinic venture program and related services. The administration is requesting that this item be removed from the agenda.
Motion to delay item.
Move.
To remove item.
Can I ask Trey, just, Mr. Guest, what would table any, so that it doesn't go into the six-month rule, but we don't need it to come back up unless we do? We don't need it, but just in case we needed it, what would be the proper motion? It wouldn't be delayed on the table.
Well, if it be, it can be reintroduced, but do you mean to avoid reintroduce and just bring it back up and pass it?
If, if, if the proper motion made was to remove it versus to delay it, it doesn't need to be delayed because it doesn't need to come up. If the proper motion was removed, it could be brought back, right? And it doesn't have to be brought back to the next meeting. It can be brought back anytime. Okay. Excuse me.
So you want the table?
No, remove. You have the proper motion.
Okay.
Right. It'd be right to remove it.
Six months of it was voted down.
Motion to remove it?
The motion is to remove it.
Okay.
Upon the recommendation of the administration.
That's proper.
We vote all in favor. Any opposed? Jim and Chuck made the motion. Jim, second.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I'm addressed to the mayor, I guess. We've delayed this twice. We're removing it now. And is the Sheriff Department currently using that facility out there, sir? Are we going under contract with them?
So this is for our clinic that the city started.
Correct.
Sometime back, I had reached out to the sheriff to help us all to bring, to bring them in. We had the marshals come first. The clinic will eventually move into the, into the reignite car work that we're doing, but this was a contract that just wasn't needed. They, we bill them for their portion. It remains the clinic of the city. I think that legal probably felt like there was a need to, this overcomplicated a simple issue. It's not our, the clinic is run by a group. You don't want the city to be the owner or to be brought in. We're not a qualified healthcare provider. It brings up a whole set of issues. And so I had asked them sometime back to start looking at it, and it kept getting delayed. And I think that legal and everybody properly concluded, this is unneeded.
So you're, we're removing it.
The sheriff's, go ahead.
My question is, the city, since it's our facility, and we're taking on the marshal's office, and I have no problem with the sheriff people at all, once we bring this back, what benefits is this going to do for the city, whereas who's going to assume most of the response to the cost of this? Are they providing their own nurses?
So we're not.
This discussed.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to be bringing it back. We don't need it. If, this was an extra belt suspender's agreement that I personally noted, I don't think you need it, and legal ended up agreeing. And the reason I think they had it was like any cooperative endeavor with another agency, you just assume, oh, we need to put all these things together. To answer your question even more directly, it remains the city's, they will be billed for their services, and they agree to be billed for whatever part the increased costs. So the city's covered. What we get in return, each side gets something returned. They get now the potential to lower their overall healthcare costs through the sheriff's group because they're participating in a clinic. We know what it's done for us, and we get the benefit of a larger socialization of, of people using it, which lowers the cost for all of our folks in our plan and everything. So everybody sort of wins on this one.
So you're saying with, as going into this, will this help the insurance lower the cost of the employees, city employees?
It can't, that is the intent, and it has shown to be that the more you have in it participating, the lower the cost. Yes, sir.
Thank you kindly.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, we voted indeed everything. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. I know we have voted three times. We have voted three times on it.
Number 12, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the law, be it submitted for auxiliary power generator at fire station number five located at 540 Calzim Boulevard.
Motion, please.
The administration is requesting that this item be delayed for two weeks.
Okay.
Second.
So I don't, we keep getting a delay. I don't, the chief is saying no. This is first I've heard of delay. It's possible.
We are not receiving the information that we need to award the bid.
Okay. This is the first I've heard of that, so I will look into it more. I knew as you walked up, when I saw Ms. Don's face, what it happened. I guess. Excuse me, Ms. Don. I understand well.
I would need.
It's a time, and it's, it's just, she has some deadlines, and we need to meet them.
Correct. And only if I receive it in the office. I have not received it in the office. Even if it's late, I still would, you know.
They know better, Ms. Don. They just tried to.
Motion in second to delay.
Move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Valord. Public comments, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number 13, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the law's proposal receipt for Yankee Clipper doing business. the Lloyd's proposal received for Yankee Clipper Doing Business as Yankee Clipper for Landscape Maintenance Services.
Motion.
Yankee Holding Doing Business as Yankee Clipper for Landscape Maintenance Services at Jackson and MacArthur.
Motion and a second, please.
Move.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion, all in, I'm sorry, discussion.
Yes. What are they, what's there in Jackson Street? Because we voted not to put anything there, what are we, what are they, just cutting grass at $14,000 a year?
Uh, yeah, we have to keep, there's grass there, we have to keep it up.
Because I've noticed the other day, I see some irrigation systems installed.
Uh, you do, yes.
They weren't there before we voted.
I think there's some minimal stuff there, yeah. I'll get you the full report of what's there. Would, would the council chose not the place before, uh, we, we addressed back then, I'll have to go back and look, but we have to keep up the area, it's grass. We don't, I mean, it, the, the area has to be mowed and, and taken care of, it would be an eyesore. It's going to be, it has to be taken care of, it can create a problem with traffic that moves through, visibility, et cetera.
So we agreed to not do the rock, the rock thing the last time here, so the grass is growing right there, so we agreed to take the.
It, it still has some minimal stuff that we have to take care of. What Mr. Green didn't want and the council didn't approve was additional beautification measures there.
Yes, we voted against that. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number 14, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the Lloyd's proposal received for Taylor Scape for Landscape Maintenance Services for the community centers.
A motion and a second, please.
Move.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number 15, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development with respect to any CDBG and home grant funding contracts, amendments, and other documents and matters with respect thereto.
A motion and a second, please.
Move.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, Mr. White.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
I listened to the discussion earlier with the committee and everything. My question is, now they've sent out the city notices to people who qualify for different things and stuff, you know, mailers and stuff, for renovations to their houses and stuff. Um, is, will anything be sent out, like, to the public, like a mailer, like what the city does, you know, when they have these funds available, you know, for the housing, but like I said, for renovations and stuff? And, um, do, do you ever get anything back from, like, who's gotten the reservations or what has been done with the reservations?
With the renovations?
Yeah, renovations.
Um, I'm sure the, um, city does advertise, advertise, they advertise on the city webpage. Also, I've noticed, like, um, they have flyers, um.
I got that mail notice, that's, but what I'm trying to say, do they ever show how many people got approved or what has, because, like, I qualify for stuff, but I've never gotten anything back, and I'm just wondering, well, like, with this program, would there be any mailers come out or anything like that?
I'm sure it would be, um, Mr. White, so that the, um, citizens will know about these programs. I mean, um, not to just be short, but if we have a program and it's there and we don't notify anyone, then how would they actually know about it? I know, like.
I was just asking, but.
Yes, sir.
Like I said, I, the only real question I have, like I said, does, does anybody, can we ever get a count of who gets?
We give it to you here. No, no, a little while back, we, actually it comes in front of the council, how many thing, how many people were served, what money was used, et cetera. This is the new version, and then we give a report at another point.
Okay, but what I'm asking is, okay, so that's in the public domain, is that what you're saying, Mayor?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, because I, like I said, I, I qualify for stuff, but I've never gotten anything, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number 16, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the Lloyd's proposal received for Yankee Holdings Doing Business as Yankee Clipper for Landscape Maintenance Services for I-49 Greenbelt.
Motion and a second, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilmember Lloyd. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number 17, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the Lloyd's proposal received from Ted Flynn LLC for Landscape Maintenance Services for Martin Park.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
J, Community Development and Public Hearing. Number 18, a resolution to consider condemnation of structures located at 2211 North MacArthur Drive and to declare a grave public emergency due to the condition of the structure and to provide with respect thereto. She got it. I have to read it into the.
A motion and second to open the public hearing.
Move.
Public comments, discussion, all in favor? Got the discussion?
Open the public hear, did you open?
I did.
A motion and second to open the public.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
You got it, yes.
Okay.
You got it.
Public hearing is open.
Just the opening.
Not coming, okay.
We got, we got it.
Okay, I was just asking.
Um, Mr., are you Ms. Tiffany?
Yes, I am.
Okay. You can speak.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was very confused there for a second, of who was doing what. I am Tiffany Slay, I'm the Director of Sales for Four Point Alexandria and the Alexandria Conference Convention Center. I just have a really quick question associated with this. This resolution is for the condemnation of the former guest house, but does this also include the ability to remove said structures, or is that a separate thing entirely? Because we've got condemned buildings all over Alexandria that haven't been removed. I just was wondering.
If I'm misadvised, so.
Yes.
If I'm mistaken, this is the motion to open the hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
At which time you guys would take up the actual substance of the matter and hear a report from the, how we typically do it with the community development, and then there'll be an opportunity for people to make comments, is that correct?
Yes.
So I think folks think they're commenting on the sub, the substance of the matter, and right now you're voting on just opening the hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
So, because I think we'll address some of the things that you're, that people have questions about, um, so if this is just to open the hearing?
Go ahead.
Respectfully, have you guys opened the, have you guys voted to open the hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, excuse me. All right, um, sorry, I was a little lost. So, um, just to, to take that question right off from the top, um, this is a request for an emergency condemnation of 2211 North MacArthur, which is the former guest house international and in suites, and, uh, because of the estimated cost of a demolition removal, that request would have to come, would likely come separately with a budget request as well. So right now, all that's being asked is for the condemnation itself, and typically the council will order a period of time for the owner to go in and have it removed themselves before the city would come in with its budget from their community development condemnation budget that it does every year, um, that you guys appropriate the money for. That budget currently is insufficient to tear down and demolish that entire hotel, so if we got to that step later, the city, again, if, you know, would come back and seek that budgetary, um, authority, and the city is trying to explore some other options, uh, that would necessarily require having the city do all of it, um, which we're still looking at. But, um, you know, the city is requesting it be done on an emergency basis, the reason for that is it is a serious grave public concern, but also because of the most recent incident that happened there, there was not enough time, uh, to notify the owners and have it placed on this council agenda. So that's the main reason we took the emergency route, it shortens the time for notification. But I can assure you, and Chad, I know, did a lot of work, uh, last week, to mail out to every potential property owner, have it filed on the public record at the courthouse, um, posting it actually to the property, which is required by statute. I don't know if you've seen the gables, they have a big red notice that this meeting was happening, and we emailed all the attorneys of record that we know represent these various potential owners and even tax sale purchasers and the like. If you look in your packets, community development went the extra step in doing an assessment on each of the buildings, as opposed to just assessing the property as a whole, um, because I think in the past, there's been some question as to which buildings were, you know, in need of condemnation, and at this point, we're requesting condemnation of all of the buildings. We do believe times of the essence, but this kind of, you know, right now, all we're requesting is the condemnation and the authority for the city to possibly do some, if the owners don't take care of it themselves, some securing and boarding up and making sure it's safe, uh, but not the full-on tear down and remove all of the debris, which would require, again, probably money to be budgeted if we got to that point. Resolution, and last bit, excuse me, the resolution needs to include the time period you guys are giving the potential owners, or all the owners to come in and, and tear it down? We would typically have that be 30 days, the statute requires you guys to set that time period. And yes, all potential owners, I can say, have actually been notified.
Okay, that's, that was going to be my question. No response from any of the owners?
Uh, we did receive one response, um, from an attorney for one of the parties, uh, who wanted to be dismissed, but you don't really dismiss parties from a condemnation, it's against the property itself, so we do ask to go forward.
Okay.
So this resolution is to condemn the property, you want the emergency route. I definitely want it to be noted that because this is a private commercial property, I would really, really like the owners to be held responsible for taking care of this because, as we've seen in the past, this would eat up a huge portion of our budget if we did have to, you know, take action. So I'm hoping that taking these steps will get them to do something, because this has been, this property's been an issue for a long time. And, um, and it's their property, so.
Well, were we to get to that stage, you know, the city would also come back and request costs be assessed by the council, a lien to be filed.
Yes.
And then the, you know, that lien is against the property, theoretically, you could take it to a sheriff's sale and try to recover your funds that way.
Is this like the third time that this, um, establishes?
No, I have more. Six or seven.
More, we do have to keep here, but it's been at least five or six.
Worst time in the last two years.
Yes.
And, and the city has tried to take, who we believe the responsible party to be, took City Court, uh, and they, at the last minute, you know, we had them file a permit, they actually signed an affidavit that they would have it demolished, and then right before the hearing, the eve of the hearing, all of a sudden, they file a motion that they're not actually the owner.
And homeless people has been staying in that building?
So we've been, now.
So it's a safety hazard, I mean.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's a safety hazard.
But until this time, the city hasn't actually had the legal authority to go on there, other than, you know, firefighting and emergency personnel, because we've been now in the ninth JDC trying to sort out who owns it. Um, and I think it's very telling, you know, that the party that we believe is the ownership, who says they're not the owners, have been delaying us getting to a resolution of who actually owns it. So it's, it's telling, if anyone wants to look at that, it's case number 282543.
So. Is any part of it still standing where homeless people can still enter into it? That's my concern.
Yes, we believe so, so we would take this authority, if the 30 days pass and nothing gets done, uh, we would also notify them it needs to be secured, but we would have it boarded up and anything that's potentially.
What can be boarded up?
There are some very small, small parts.
Madam President, if, if the council declares the emergency, which you should.
Yes.
Then I will follow suit with, uh, a declaration of some very specific things with the fire chief that will go to the heart of what you just asked. So while there's not stuff to board up, there are standing structures that I believe are immensely dangerous to leave standing. So with your declaration, I will make a sub-declaration within it, if you will, and talk to the chief about what we can legally do. I guess I can be as specific as I need, there's a standing structure that needs to be pushed over.
Okay.
And, uh, if we have the authority, and I get the authority cleared from legal, which we haven't worked through all of, but we preliminarily think we can, and he has the authority to do, then that, that will be done. And I absolutely think that's necessary today.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Attorney Smith. This last fire occurred Peabody Homecoming Weekend Friday. I videoed it live. And, uh, I talked with one of the owners, kind of just sent it to him, and told him, look, the building's on fire again, you got to do something with this.
Who was that with whom you talked, who claimed to be an owner?
Well, I said, I, let me, let me rephrase that, let me rephrase that. I spoke with a person who used to be affiliated with it. We were at a church gathering, and I want to make sure, so, but I'm saying, and I think these people are still in litigation, but if they aren't, uh, and I, and I told, and I believe we need to do the condemnation, it is an eyesore, it is a health hazard, and certainly to the lady who owns next door, it's, it's horrible, but it does need to go to come down, but I just want to make sure we don't get involved in a lawsuit from the owners, whomever they are.
Right.
That, to come back and bite us, because we have done things in the past. So I'm, I'm aboard with the resolution, it needs to come down.
Yes, sir.
I saw it burn, I saw it burn four times. I. No, not sick. I was coming from, I was coming from Albertson's when this fire occurred Friday, Homecoming Weekend, and I saw the smoke rising, and I just came around MacArthur and saw it, got out and videoed, I have it on my phone, but I'm just saying, it needs to come down, but just make sure it don't come back to bite us.
Yes, sir, so two, two things. First, if the city is going to spend significant money on, on demolishing it, we will come back to the council and ask for that authority through the budget. And second, that's why we've done all, as many different types of notices as we can, every way we can think of to reach out to the potential owners, and again, the responsibility is to notify the potential owners, it's their responsibility to know what they own.
This is not, the city did nothing wrong here.
Right.
Because I know we get beat up in everywhere in the media about it, it's just not the city that did it. You have people who are one day the owner, one day not, you probably made the deposition list, Mr. Green, with whomever you talked to, they'll be asking you who it was, because people are saying, in one case we own and in another case we don't.
Accepting restitution, for example.
Say the, say that again?
I said, accepting restitution, for example, or being awarded restitution, but.
It's, it's a mess.
Yeah, councilman, so we are really trying to make sure we check every legal box, so later, if it comes to that, whoever's responsible can't wiggle out of it.
And so the taxpayers know, talking about over a million dollars, that the taxpayer would have to do, it's someone else's responsibility. If you're proximate to it, you don't care, you want it down, but tax, but I pay taxes, and I don't think it's fair that Alexandria taxpayers have to pay what a private person didn't take care of. And so, not just as mayor, as a taxpayer, I'm offended that that amount of money you need for many places would be two or three years' worth of that money for one recalcitrant, recalcitrant group of landowners that won't do it. And so that has to be considered in, in all of this. Now, weighed against that is the, the nature of the danger of, of the place itself, but the city didn't.
Right, we didn't create. Right, we didn't create.
Create this problem.
The effect of it is so huge in the way it looks, and if we have conventions coming to your business, I mean, we want people to come to Alexandria, we want people to look at our city and, and enjoy being here, I mean, that, that is just such a deterrent and it's, it's horrible, and I think that to put down a thriving business because of the negligence of other individuals, you know.
We're being asked, why do we didn't spend money to make a, it's not our, that's not what taxpayers do, but let me just say this, we are looking at some rather new unorthodox things, from talking to the National Guard and others, there are opportunities that we can look at to help us engineer this down and seek other different grant opportunities to get this paid for. So it will be a very aggressive approach that doesn't guarantee we can do it without just you having to spend the money, which I'm not prepared to say today that you would do, but to authorize that aggressive approach, we need you to make the declaration tonight.
Let's vote.
Get back on track.
Yeah, I think they're ready to vote.
Councilman Fowler.
Well, we have a public comment too.
Let me ask one question, uh, with all of those thoughts in mind, is there any amendment that needs to be made to the resolution, or as it stands, is it okay?
It's okay, you, y'all have all been looking at the pictures in your books, there's pictures in the books presented, someone needs to move to attach the pictures and identify the pictures as taken at that time, and for instance, Councilman Green has referenced, he took a video on his phone, I think it would be proper to introduce the video of the fire as well as photographs taken on that day, and Mr. Smith, those photographs are from the day or after the fire, right?
Uh, those, I believe those photographs are from the Monday, after the fire took place on a Friday evening, it would be that Monday, September twenty eighth, I'm sorry, and whichever that was.
The most appropriate thing is for the fire chief to stand up and take the mic and tell you.
That's true.
That he, what he recommends.
And also, and, and the inspection reports in the book as well.
So the issue is that there's not a date with these pictures?
No.
No, no.
We're off track.
I'm just trying to make sure the record is complete in case someone challenges later, you guys have taken.
That's what I mean, we need to put, okay.
He's addressing what Mr. Green's concerned about.
Okay.
So addressing to the photographs, the fire department has photographs the night of the fire, so we can give you that particular instance.
You'll certify those with the night of the fire?
Yes.
Add to the record?
Yes, sir.
The clerk will accept those as certified.
We need to add those to the motion?
We're just, we, I think we just did, as long as that, that'll be part of it, and the clerk will accept those, certified by the fire chief, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Getting back on track, so we're talking about the agency to do this, what timeframe we're talking about, getting back on track with the timeframe, starting, clock starts tonight.
Yes, sir, it's the, and the timeframe will be what the city council decides it is.
What do you recommend?
Well, we're recommending thirty days, but it could be less than that. And that would be, that would need to be spelled on the resolution, the statute says the governing authority sets the time, the deadline, so to speak, for the action to be taken by the property owner, and that's you guys. Well, it could be less.
Don't go long than thirty days.
Fifteen.
We have, um.
I have a question, I have a question here, so.
Fifteen would be fine.
We put this deadline in place, what happens next?
If what?
We put a deadline in place, what happens next?
Well.
Okay, we put a deadline in place.
Yes, sir.
And the owners don't meet the deadline.
Right.
What happens next?
Well, the city, uh, in its existing authority and operating budget would go out there and make sure it's safe, and that would be probably some towers that need to come down, anything that needs to be boarded up.
Short time.
Secure it, the city would go secure the site.
So, so securing it, would that, would that involve knocking stuff down or boarding stuff up?
It could be a combination of both.
Okay.
I'm on four, bro.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we have, um.
Seven days?
Mr. Vanderlick?
Yeah, I just, what Trey is saying is right, I mean, this isn't a thirty day, look, it's gonna sound like we're being.
I think what's the shortest we can go, because it's a public safety issue.
There's been years to do this, this is.
Yeah, because it is a safe, I mean, my concern is those homeless people, it doesn't matter what anything look like, that they go into it, and, and that's a big concern of myself. So let's, um.
That's who starts the.
Seventy-two hours.
Okay. All in favor? I have a Mr., um, Vanderlick, Ms. Vanderlick, you have anything?
I'm Katie Vanderlick, and I'm the Director of Explore Alexandria Pineville, and our job obviously is to recruit people to our hotels and recruit conferences here, and I appreciate you making this a top priority, because Four Points is one of our bigger hotels, and they just went and, you know, completed renovations, and Alexandria Convention Center is one, along with the Randolph Riverfront Center, are our two main event spaces here. So, and I just want to let you know, just while we're sitting here, just some good news, last month, uh, our hotel taxes were up eighteen percent from the year before, and then this year total from 2024, they're up over eighteen percent. That is great news, people are coming here, people are visiting here, people are staying here and spending their money, so I appreciate you making this a top priority to continue to allow these people to come here, so thank you.
Thank you, so.
Who else, who else has a comment?
That's it. I mean, Mr. White, you didn't say anything?
Well, I thought she, she.
This lady, this lady.
You still need to. I had started.
And that's, and that's okay, I don't have a whole lot to say, it sounds like y'all are ready to get the ball rolling, which I'm very, very thankful for, speaking to the emergent need of, of danger with this situation, I can tell you that I'm there probably more hours in a week than I'm at home, fifty-plus hours a week, and I know that between Four Points and the Alexandria Convention Center, the homeless who have been staying there can be very dangerous, we've had to take precautions on our property in order to secure the safety of our facilities, as well as our guests, as well as our employees, and that was even before this fire. Please don't think that this fire eliminated that danger in any way. If you have not been out there and have not had the privilege of seeing what this burned down structures look like, you should go by. There is still plenty of availability, plenty of opportunity for people to get in to the structures, there's a lot of openings, there are three standing structures now, not just the front part that was knocked down. I just, the pictures don't necessarily do it justice, the state of complete and utter, just the rubble, does not do it justice, especially when we're talking about citywide conventions coming into town, we're talking about industries that are moving into town and looking for spaces to have their training, and otherwise, as Katie recently said, we are the second largest event center in town, we do recruit, um, businesses and conferences and associations from all over the state, they come to us, they come to the Riverfront Center, and we fill hotels, and those hotel taxes, six percent of that funds directly the C V B, GATA, and a host of other, um, and a host of other organizations in town that in turn feed money into the city. I realize money is a very, very large part of this discussion, especially like the mayor said, when talking about the city tearing down and taking on the expense needed to get rid of this property when it does belong to an independent person. I, I agree a hundred percent, it's, it's a lot and it's overwhelming, and we don't want to be responsible for what someone else should be doing as citizens, I get that, I do get that, but if we want to promote Alexandria to continue growing this eighteen percent year over year, then we're going to have to do something, this is the first step that I'm very excited to see y'all taking and very thankful for, um, that we're going to, we're going to have to take these steps and then continue on with them if we want to see our central Louisiana grow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam President.
Get him, Chuck. I used to go out there to the guest house and I saw Tony Brown at the four o'clock news hour talking about it, um, the N double A C P used to meet out there, it used to be a nice place and everything.
This is for you.
I know about condemnation and stuff.
Yes, yes, sir.
The only thing is, I heard somebody mention the National Guard, during their two-week summer camp, it would be.
This deal, Mr. White?
No, no, somebody mentioned it, it would be good for them, because they can demolish stuff like that.
Yes.
And it could be covered, that's all I'm trying to say, whoever mentioned about the National Guard.
Okay.
And that could be something that, and the military police could guard the area too while they're doing the demolition, because I've done stuff like that, because I was a military police officer.
Okay, Mr. White.
But all I'm saying is, that's a great idea to use the National Guard to demolish the place, you could save money, that, that's state, it could be state money or federal money to do that, but y'all need to find out who exactly owns it, because if you don't, then the taxpayer is gonna be, you really won't be on, but the taxpayers will be held accountable for that.
I'm a taxpayer.
Well, I understand that, I understand that.
But we thank you, we thank you for your comments.
But like I said, we need to use the National Guard.
Thank you, Mr. White.
I'd like to give, make a motion to add to it, I'll give them seventy-two hours timeframe on this.
A second.
Yeah, they did it right.
Madam President, just before you guys vote, I want to make sure the record is clear, that one of the comments was glad to see this first step is being taken, this is by no means the first step. The city of Alexandria Legal Department, that's why you see this young man who's a super bright guy so frustrated, that keeps being, that narrative is so false and stale, and it keeps being put out there, these guys have been fighting to, the same group of people who one day own and one day don't, for an untold period of time while each thing is happening, you, if you go read the record in this case and go see what they face, it will astound you what's been happening, so that is not the issue at all, we have been trying to do it, and as it goes on, it gets more expensive, and it's over a million dollars at this point, so they're doing lots of things to make it happen, and it hasn't happened.
Well, that's what we.
This will help us do some things that we can go clear out, as, uh, the young lady said, and she's right, there are some things there that make it super dangerous right now, it's a mess, and by getting this, you're at least authorizing the chief to go make some determinations that he cannot make without this order, and I know you're about to pass it, so I'll be quiet.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody have any, oh, question, okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.